The candidates in the November election for school board in Stillwater School District 834. My name is Liz Nordling and I will be moderating this forum tonight. As a trusted volunteer organization, the League of Women Voters does not support or oppose political parties or candidates. We sponsor forums like this to provide voters an opportunity to hear candidates' views about issues of interest in the upcoming election. This forum is being broadcast live on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast. Playback times can be found online at www.vactv.org. The order for speaking tonight will begin in alphabetical order and will be rotated thereafter. Candidates' remarks are being timed to assure equality of time and questions are being collected from the audience. The candidates are, and there are four slots that will, four people will be elected. The candidates are Mark Burns, Matthew Cooper, John Fila, Don Hovland, Shelley Pearson, Tina Riley, and Liz Weisberg. We'll begin with opening statements and we'll start with Mark Burns.
Thank you very much for this opportunity for all of us to share our message with you the voters. My name is Mark Burns. I'm a resident of West Lakeland. Been there for eighteen years with my wife and two daughters. I've got one daughter in ninth grade at the high school and another daughter's in fourth grade at Stillwater Middle School in the Gate Program. I myself am a 1991 graduate of Stillwater area public schools. I attended Lake Elmo Elementary, then Oakland Junior High, and then Stillwater High School. I graduated in 1991. Thorough after, I received an undergraduate degree in chemical engineering and went on while working at 3M to get my law degree. And I currently am practicing as an intellectual property attorney. The reason why I'm running for school board is that I want to help define a unifying direction for Stillwater area public schools so that we can look toward a future, focus on opportunities that can both improve student experiences and outcomes and also solidify our financial foundation.
Thank you. Now with this opening statement is Matthew Cooper.
Good evening. I'm Matt Cooper. This election is about our students and our education first. It's about our priorities and about moving forward. It's about our financial stability and our financial sustainability to allow that. I stand for the physical and psychological safety of our students and the excellence in their education. We have to get it as right as we can for each and every student because we only get one chance, because they only come through the system once. We've got to get it right. We also need to make sure that their preparation and performance are excellent regardless of their choice of life's path. We want to make sure that all opportunities are wide open for them when they graduate. Thanks.
Thank you. Now with this opening statement, John Fila.
Hi. Thanks for your time tonight. I've been a teacher for about twenty years now. And when I started as a student teacher, I was struggling with a student who was bound and determined to get an F in my class. And my supervising teacher pulled me aside and he told me, "You can't save them all." And I've been spending the last twenty years trying to prove him wrong. And I'll probably spend the rest of my career trying to do the same thing. I get really emotional about these kinds of things because I hated school as a high school student. It matters to me what kinds of experiences our students have in our schools. And as I hear about those experiences from my own children, from their friends, from administrators and teachers, I felt it was time to step up and have somebody with my experience have a voice at the table. I've been teaching in alternative learning centers. I've taught second grade for a summer. I've taught at the college level. I've taught recovery schools. I've taught online in blended classrooms. I've spent my career trying to spend, to help struggling learners. And that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you. Next with this opening statement, Don Hovland.
Yes. Thank you for having me. I spent sixteen years, seventeen years in Montana as a teacher and an administrator of a very large high school. Then I came to Stillwater in 1972. And I was principal of the Stillwater Junior High School for, until I retired. And I simply owe this school district everything because the teachers that I was privileged to work with, I have no right to take credit for their achievements. During my years, I was named Minnesota's first Principal of the Year. And I had an opportunity to go to the University of St. Thomas and get my educational specialist degree. And I found that that helped me be aware of what you should be doing with teachers, to be teachers.
Okay. Thank you. Now with your opening statement, Shelley Pearson.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum. And thank you to all of you who are in attendance. I've lived in Stillwater for the last eleven years and have four children attending schools in the district. I am here because I believe strongly in the importance of education, both through academics, arts, and athletics. And also believe in the importance of helping students really find their passion so that they can grow into capable, caring adults who have found something that they love to do. To that end, I would love to see us grow in how we prepare students for their future by supporting opportunities for students of all ages, from preschool all the way through to experience different careers and different educational opportunities, whether a four-year college or a two-year college or military or some other path. I'd like us to grow in that area. I think there's so much hope for this district and so much I believe we can become. That's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you. Now an opening statement from Tina Riley.
After I graduated high school, I decided to go into business and have been successfully self-employed. I am self-taught, self-motivated, self-driven, representing the direction of education today. I have children that went to college and children in the trades. There is no one right path. There is our own path. Our district has experienced a very strenuous time. While attending board meetings and workshops, listening to speakers plead during forums, I can say tone and tenor has not changed. Promises have not been kept, mistakes have been and continue to be made. Schools have been closed and students took their funding with them, contributing to the decline in capture rate. The district wants to pass a non-voter approval referendum onto the taxpayers. We need to elect board members that represent the community, ones that collaborate but are independent thinkers, ones that listen and ask tough questions, ones that don't blindly follow but demand follow-through, and have the ability to look to the future. I am that one.
Thank you. Now with your opening statement, Liz Weisberg.
Hi. I'm Elizabeth Weisberg. I've also lived here for eleven years. I live in Grant with my husband and we have three children. One is graduated, sorry, one is graduated from college this past summer and one is taking a little bit of a break from college and one is a sophomore at the high school. I have my undergraduate from Baylor University. I have a BBA with a double major in finance and economics. I have a master's of education from River Falls. And I was, I subbed in the district. I got a long-term subposition in the district at Oak Park. And the year the schools were closed, I was at both Marine and Withrow as the media specialist and, sorry, the word, I'm forgetting my word. Intervention specialist, I'm sorry. I was a member of the Innovating Small Schools Committee and I was also a member of the Long Range Planning Facilities Committee. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having everybody here tonight and thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now go to questions from the audience and the question goes to you first, Tina Riley. What do you see as the top two challenges facing our district and what do you propose to address them?
So I would say the top two challenges in our district, one would be unifying the community and the second would be the decline in enrollment. And if we can address the climate in the district and give the kids, the students, the support they need within the classroom and lead into a healthier culture, we can then have a resulting increased enrollment and revenue and then increased community trust and support.
Thank you. The question now goes to Liz Weisberg.
I think the top two challenges facing our district are restoring trust. I think that myself as a voter, I was very disappointed and after the last bond that I thought I was voting for growth in all, in the entire district. But instead, then school, three schools were closed and I felt duped. I felt it was a bait and switch. I felt the plan was done in secret and I was offended personally. And that's one of the reasons that I'm here today. The other thing we need to do is increase our enrollment. That's, when I was a member of the Long Range Facilities Plan, that was the plan, to grow the district in all directions. And I know that we are told that growth is only happening in the south, but all you have to do is drive around town and growth is everywhere. I have a friend who put her house on the market in Oak Park. It sold in five days. I have a friend who put her house on the market in Marine. It sold in three weeks. So we have growth and happening now and we need to take advantage of it.
Thank you. The question now goes to Mark Burns.
Thank you. I see our two top challenges here in the district. First is how to appropriately address the growth in this district. We have dynamic growth in the southern part of the district and it needs to be addressed. We have full-capacity school in Brookview. And I think that it does not need to be an either-or proposition. We can, through addressing the growth in the southern part of the district, it can truly benefit all the students in this district. I feel that's very important. And the second is, the challenge in this district is how to unify the, all the voters and the community behind the schools. It's extremely important that the school board work together in combination with the administration, teachers, parents, and the community at large to have a unified, forward-looking direction.
Thank you. The question now goes to Shelley Pearson. And I am told that people in the audience can't hear everyone, so please speak up loudly.
Okay. Thank you. There are many things that we can look at, but I would first name the budget because it's something that is right there that we're looking at right now and we're looking at a budget deficit. I would address this by stepping way back and as much as we can, starting at a zero-based budget where we just start with nothing and then build on what we have to have and then what we want to have. I think this is something that we need to be looking at very soon, both for the short term and for the long term. The second is related to the budget and has to do with community engagement. I think we can do a better job engaging our communities and also our current families and those who we would hope would choose our schools. I think if we keep our current families happy, then they will tell others about our schools and we will see an increase in enrollment, which will help the budget. But also we'll have our community able to get behind our schools when we do need their help in budget areas or in other things that are going on in our district. So budget and community engagement.
Thank you. The question now goes to John Fila.
Thanks. So I agree with the engagement issue and it's part of why I'm running, but I do want to talk about some of the financial aspects. I'm a participant in the Open Educational Resources Movement. It's kind of OER for short. And what that is, is content that has been put out into the public, Creative Commons licenses, public domain content that is open for anyone to use to whatever extent they would like to use it, modify and adapt that content. There are materials out there that could allow Stillwater to never purchase a textbook or curriculum ever again. That, it's already out there. It's already been developed. Stillwater already has access to it and over 200 school districts in the state are already utilizing it to some degree. So right there, I know in the Anoka-Hennepin District for instance, they were able to save over $100,000 just by replacing one textbook for a semester-long statistics course by using OER. So it looks like, I'll have to leave it at that.
Thank you. The question goes to Matt Cooper.
Sure. I think the two principal issues facing us are financial stability, which we must have and we must be able to sustain that through operational efficiency, perhaps shared programs in some cases with other districts. And we need strategy. Strategy for real communication from the community, from the administrators, from the board, for dealing with growth based on demographic analyses, for wisdom that's obtained by data analysis with insight. And the board learns from the community and then leads and then we achieve together. That's the only way we're going to move forward.
Thank you. Question goes to Don Hovland.
The two most important things in any school district that has to be guarded are the teachers and the students. That's keeping class sizes manageable and low. And I agree with the colleague here who says we need to answer the financial issues. I spent four years in the National Association of Secondary School Principals and represented North and South Dakota, Wyoming, Wisconsin, Minnesota, and Iowa. And I found, as I visited those schools in those states, the ones that really excelled and were national schools of excellence were the ones that put the teacher and the students first. And we need to make sure that we protect those two elements if we want to really grow. And I think we have the talent in the classrooms to do that, but they need to be supported.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question and it goes to Matt Cooper first. How much emphasis do you think should be put on vocational training compared with college prep work?
I think there needs to be a balance between those two because we have students that choose different paths in life and we need to make sure that we help them learn to perform, prepare for that balanced life with respect to whatever choice that is. And that, as I mentioned in my opening statement, they have to have a breadth of opportunities available to them regardless of their choice. So we have to be balanced in that application as well.
Thank you. The question now goes to Tina Riley.
I think a lot of balance as well should go into both of them. I have actually gone on the field trip with the board and administration to Alexandria as they were looking into this for the district itself because not every student is going to go to college. There are many students that are being missed and actually would go into trade work.
Thank you. Question goes to Don Hovland.
Yes. I think that the thing that we really have to protect is to keep the class sizes down as low as we can get them. We can, we should be looking into the possibility of some student internships who are not college-bound to get them in work situations that they can get a feel for the things that they need to do to survive without a college degree. And there are, there are companies in Stillwater and in this school district that would be happy to work with some students in internship situations where they know what's happening. The gifted program has some really bright spots and in some areas, we don't do that well. The fine arts in this school district are the best, probably the best in the state without question.
Thank you. The question goes to Mark Burns.
Thank you very much. I agree very much that vocational training needs to be a central part of our education here in the, in the district. One of the new laws that we have to address is called ESSA. It's the Every Student Succeeds Act. And it drives toward equity and opportunity for all our students. And I believe that having vocational training and vocational education within our schools is very much at the, toward the heart of that equity and opportunity. So I believe strongly that kids should have an opportunity to take college preparatory classes, but also classes in the realm of vocational arts. There's much, much opportunity in the workplace for them.
Thank you. The question goes to Liz Weisberg.
I think we need to increase the vocational training we do in high school. I think we could partner with the community to do internships or apprenticeships. I also think we need to have classes about real-life skills. My son asked me the other day, "How did you learn how to do taxes?" Well, I was a business major, but there are a lot of people that aren't business majors and it's a complicated thing. How did you learn how to balance a checkbook? How did you learn how to budget? Those are all real-life skills that I feel like our children are missing out on. So in addition to increasing vocational training, I think we should also look at a life skills training also.
Thank you. The question goes to John Fila.
In my day job, I work at Intermediate District 287. We serve unique student populations in the west metro area and we have a career and tech ed department. And from what I've learned over my last ten years in that district is that the foundations of those pathways are the same. So math is the gatekeeper for any career or any college option. We need to make sure our students are proficient in math. We need to make sure that they have their skill, those skill gaps filled in so that they're prepared and that they have the options to take one of those paths that they succeed. I also think that there are new forms of literacy that are important. We need, beyond just being able to read and write, students should be able to have some experience with coding. They should have at least a cursory understanding of HTML coding, which is how websites basically talk to your browsers so that they display. That's how students are going to communicate in the future.
Thank you. The question goes to Shelley Pearson.
Thank you. As I stated in my opening statement, I think we have a great opportunity to grow in this area and we've, many of us read articles and seen stories about how there's a shortage of trades and it will continue to get shorter and shorter. And I would love to see us put more emphasis of that in our schools, to bring in our community members who are in the trades who can share with kids, even from elementary school. I'd love to start exposing our elementary students to the different opportunities that are out there so they can start thinking about this as they go through school and have an opportunity to do apprenticeships or to go job shadow or other things where they can find out maybe this is something that they would have an aptitude for and have the opportunity to do.
Thank you. Our next question will go to John Fila first. What would you do to lower class sizes and what size at each level would be your goal?
So that's a good issue. I don't think that class sizes in and of themselves are necessarily a problem. A lot of it has to do with how classrooms are structured and organized and what supports the teachers have in those classrooms. My first year of teaching, I had one class of 45 and we had a co-teacher and we did just fine with that large of a group and it actually worked out really well. In alternative settings, I've had class sizes that were seven students and they were some of the most challenging classes I've ever taught. So I think by utilizing technology to some degree, offering blended learning opportunities in the classroom, you can have some students working on projects together, some working on projects alone, some students working specifically conferencing with teachers. There are lots of ways to restructure a classroom so that the class numbers themselves don't necessarily impact how the students are learning. I taught in a setting in seventh through 12th grade, all students needing different requirements, and I was able to do that with all students.
Thank you. The question goes to Don Hovland.
Yes. Thank you. I think one of the things that, that we need to remember is that schools have changed a lot since we went. And I tried to visit every elementary school and junior high and middle schools and I find that, like if I, at Oakland Middle School, they have a vocational program that should be the model for every school in the state. They have an invention lab and actually one of their students did make it on television that he finally figured out a way to charge cell phones by building a bicycle that recharge the batteries. And so you have, you have, the other thing that, that exists at both middle schools and the high school are teams, interdisciplinary teams. Five teachers with thirty students each, so it's equivalent of a, of a school of 150 within a school of 3,200.
Thank you. The question goes to Tina Riley.
I would like to make sure we have enough teacher support in our classrooms. I know that different classes have different ideals. Math and reading should be lesson numbers and actually our middle school science program should probably come down as well, being that our proficiency is starting to drop. I think that is something that can be slowly reduced over time. I know three paras, you know, you can get one F for, for one FTE, you can get three paras. So we probably need to look a little bit of that, on that end.
Thank you. Question goes to Liz Weisberg.
To lower class sizes, we, we need to increase our enrollment, to increase our revenue, and we need to reduce our expenses. For the last five years, our administrative expenses have gone up dramatically along with the administrative positions that we have. We also spend more on consulting than we ever have before and I feel like those dollars would be better spent in the classroom. When I taught at Oak Park, I had a long-term subposition in a fourth grade class and I had thirty-three students with no para. And I'm going to disagree with Mr. Fila, that was too large of a class. I've had smaller classes and with smaller classes, there are less behavior issues. And I'm very much in favor of smaller class sizes. I would prefer an elementary school class size of 25 and then incrementally larger in the junior high and the high school.
Thank you. Question goes to Mark Burns.
Thank you. While I agree that class size is an important characteristic and important consideration for our schools, it isn't the only one. I agree with John that having resources in the classroom, I think is maybe more important than a specific figure on what the, what the numbers are. If you compare our class sizes to some of the others in our area, we actually compare very favorably, particularly in the, in the K through two age groups, we're actually below some. I've heard that the charter school, St. Croix Preparatory, has a, has a even class size of 30 across the board from K through six. Ours is lower than that, K through three. But what St. Croix Prep does is that they put resources into the classroom. So whether it's paraprofessionals, other resources that can aid our teachers with the class sizes they currently have.
Thank you. Shelley Pearson.
Thank you. I would agree that I don't think there's a magic number that's the right size for classes. But I do think it is about meeting student need. And I do think that there can be creative ways to do that, whether it's through having paras in the classroom or whether it's through different, I've seen some, when my kids were in elementary school, there were places where they went to stations. And so there was opportunity to do independent work while the teacher worked with other students. So it's more about meeting the student's need and having that time where the teacher can find out really what the student needs. So I think meeting that student need in creative ways and if the budget allows, it's great, but it does cost a lot to decrease even by one student. So if we can find other ways to make sure our kids' needs are being met, I think that's best.
Thank you. Matt Cooper.
Well, I think intuitively, we'd all agree that smaller class sizes are better than larger class sizes, but that's an ideal world. There is a cost for those sizes and the district is already in deficit. The reality is that precision in learning, like precision in medic, medicine, tailored to individual students' talents, interests, and rate of learning, really mitigate class size. So that is just a number. It's one of the factors we think about and that's why we need long-range facilities planning as has been recommended. We always need to be thinking ahead.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments?
I would like to. Thank you. So rather than thinking of it as a numbers issue in the classroom, I would, I would rather think about it as an engagement issue. Like what are we doing to keep students connected to what they're supposed to be learning? You know, if, if we look at some of our enrichment classes where students get to do really cool, hands-on, science experiments and then other students in other science classrooms are reading a book and taking notes, you know, which, which one would you rather be in? Which one would you maybe listen a little bit more attentively to? You know, those are the kinds of things that are going to keep students engaged and the numbers won't necessarily be what matters.
Thank you. Anyone else? Liz Weisberg?
Yes. I heard Mr. Cooper say that, sorry, Dr. Cooper say there's going to be another Long Range Facilities Planning Committee and that is a little bit offensive to me. I was on the, the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee and I don't understand why that one was just discarded. The district did a, a study in 2011 and all the principals were on board and they recommended smaller class sizes. So it's frustrating to me also as a community member that the district continues to have committees getting information and then discarding it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, in fact, I happen to have the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee report in front of me and you were indeed on it. And in fact, I see it through a different light that the district actually has followed many of those things. And I think, you know, for example, as we think about how we teach things to Mr. Fila's point, we think about languages. We often start kids in elementary school through 12th grade. Are they fluent operationally? There are better ways we can learn from other disciplines, how we can more efficiently teach world languages, for example, to get them to operational fluency in a more efficient way. So the number becomes irrelevant. It's really about how we do things as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Matt Hovland, Don Hovland.
Yes. I think that one of the things that we had several years ago I think that one of the things that we had several years ago, we had teacher internships. And what that meant, they were, they were college graduates, they were changing, some of them were changing careers, but they did a full year's internship. They taught five classes. They were paid a half a salary of a beginning teacher. And the net results were, our class sizes at Stillwater Junior High were much lower than at Oakland. So you can, there are ways to get at class sizes.
Anyone else?
I'd like to respond.
Yes, Tina Riley.
Yeah. So studies and research show that smaller class size has a, a better impact on student development. And if those needs are met in the elementary years, you need less intervention as they mature into their secondary years. Academic achievement and student behavior are influenced by the quality of the relationships and when you have a class size that is too large, that actually is counterproductive to, to that.
Thank you. Mark Burns.
I do have one comment about the class size. As we, I think we would all agree that a reduction in class size is desirable, but the second half of the question is, how do we do that? And, and that's a very challenging part of the question because we're dealing right now with significant budget questions. And, and simply talking about reducing class size, I think misses the point because of the tremendous financial investment it takes. And that's why we're talking about other ways to, to get at the students without having to lower the class size.
Thank you. Shelley, anything? Okay. And we're gonna move on to the next question and it goes to you first. Currently, our general operating budget faces a $2.5 million deficit. Where would you consider looking to recoup that money?
That is somewhere, as I mentioned before, I would really like to take a look at a zero base where we start, just, we take everything out, we put in what we need because we know there's things that have to go in there. We have buildings, they have costs, we have teachers, but seeing where we come out and what kinds of programming we want to keep, what needs to go, I want, I really wanna look at everything, from our administrative costs to our programming costs to our, we need to look at everything, our sports, everything, and just make sure that we have a really comprehensive plan on how we're gonna do things, not just breaking off things here and there and kinda putting a Band-Aid on, but looking really at the whole picture, making sure we have the best budget that we can have.
Thank you. The question goes to Tina Riley.
So if we're losing money faster than we're bringing it in, then we should really be a priority of the board to understand why and how that is happening, not just one person. I've asked for programs from the district months and months and months ago and have not been answered. I want to know what we have that are not mandated and, and if they're successful and whether or not, or how they, how they measure that success. I think we need to look at our consulting contracts, our travel and conference, and increase in admin of thirty percent in, in, back in two thousand and fifteen. And I, and I still would like to see a list of central service staff, not teachers or support staff at this time, but we need to start chipping away at admin support services.
Thank you. Question goes to Matt Cooper.
Well, we need operational efficiency and one of the ways we get operational efficiency is to make sure that we fix the capital budget. That sounds a little different because the operation, the operational funds, the unassigned operational funds are a different budget. But to the extent that we sell facilities, sell real estate that's not being used, we make sure that the efficiency which we gain there don't spill over into our operational budget. We do need additional sources of revenue. Longer term, we need to keep students in our boundaries. We need to attract to students. How we do that is through the excellence and provision of our, of our programs and we need to fix our PR problem. This district has a significant PR problem because of all the controversy and all the vitriol that's, that's existed. If we're gonna work together, we need to do that maturely. Not everybody gets to win every issue, but nonetheless, we need to come back to the table to work together to move forward to solve these problems. These are real problems, these are present problems, and we need to solve them together in order to move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Question goes to John Fila.
All right. I'm gonna try and be really quick here. It's probably a lot worse than anybody in here realizes or thinks. When parents are spending hundreds of dollars on school supplies that schools could easily purchase at a reduced cost tax-free from vendors and instead of passing that cost off to parents, parents are subsidizing this district. Teachers are subsidizing this district right out of their own pockets. Students are spending, they have about twenty-three hundred days or so with us from preschool to, to twelfth grade. How many of those days are they spending talking about fundraising when they should be working on academics and building community in their classrooms? It's worse than all of us realize. I started talking about open educational resources as a way to gain back hundreds of thousands of dollars in terms of money spent on curriculum and textbooks and those kinds of supplies that could be brought in. Bringing in additional students could also mean offering some online options for students who are looking for other opportunities. If the classes aren't fitting in their schedules, they're often going somewhere else, we could get those students back.
Thank you. The question goes to Don Hovland.
I think that there are ways to, to reduce budgets in certain areas that do not necessarily improve the learning situations of students. I think you, you need to look at the areas where there are opportunities for students and teachers to learn without being in a formal classroom setting. There are all kinds of opportunities to do that and I think we need to explore that. I do think, again, I come back to this, it, some of you have heard me say this before, but the teaching, teacher job is the toughest job in education because you have to be better as the day goes on because your audience isn't. And I, and I think you gotta respect the teacher and the challenges that they face and that has, that needs to be protected. So if you're gonna cut money, it needs to come from someplace else, not from the classroom teacher.
Thank you. The question goes to Liz Weisberg.
Part of the reason, well, one of the many reasons we were given for closing schools was that we would have a $1.26 million annual reinvestment in our schools, that we would not have to make budget cuts anymore. So I'm a little bit confused why we're still having to make budget cuts after the schools were closed and we're supposed to have all that money. So I don't know where that money went. I agree with several people that said we need to cut administration, we need to, we need to make cuts in consulting. There are certain things that we could do. I know last school board meeting, it was, the comment was made that our community is, does not have experts. I think that's wrong. I think that a lot of the money that we pay for consultants, we could get the same services for free in our community and asking our teachers what they really want. I agree with what Shelley said, that we should start at a zero and see what we truly need because we need to focus more on what is gonna help the classroom.
Thank you. Mark Burns.
So we do in fact have a significant budget that the, the board administration are trying to work through right now. Difficult questions. What do we cut? How do we, how do we have a balanced budget moving forward? There are certainly ways that, that we can address cutting, but I would certainly prioritize spending in the classroom. So there, whether it's, whether it's through some of the programs that we have added in the last few years that we cut back, I think that most areas maybe should feel an equal pinch. But ultimately, we need to preserve our spending within the classroom because that's where I believe it matters most, with the teachers and the, and the students directly, direct impact. I also think that part of, how do we avoid this problem in the future? And, and that is, we've talked a little bit here about our enrollment. How do we make sure that Stillwater Schools is the choice from north to south? And that, that comes to addressing where there is opportunities for, for bringing in people to our district.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Yes, Matt Cooper.
It's, it's okay to be critical if things don't turn out right, but one of the things that's been suggested is that the data is not available. In fact, I'm holding a copy of the executive summary to the school board on finance, facility enrollment and demographics overview, which the district made public just several days ago. So the data is out there. So we don't have to speak in abstracts. We can deal with the data and find insight in, in the data to move forward. Starting with zero sounds like going back to scratch. I'm not sure we have the luxury to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tina Riley.
I would like to counter Matt there. The data is not always immediately available. There are many times the board packet, yes, as of Sunday, there are many times the board packet comes out and the community does not have the same information the board has at the table. There are many requests that go months unanswered as mine is specifically. So I would, I would argue a little bit with the data always been available and I've gone to every one of those meetings in that packet.
Thank you. Shelley Pearson.
Thank you. And I would just add that I think we need more information. I think we, we need to really see more trending and we've seen small snapshots each time we look at the budget, but we need more, like a ten-year, what have administrative costs done, what have teacher salaries done, each of these areas, so we can kind of see a little bit better where are the areas that have ballooned and that we need to look more closely at. I also agree with driving enrollment by finding out, we need to call our people who leave and see why they're going and see what we can do to provide a good educational opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're gonna move on to the next question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to mention that it's not like the money comes in and it's all in one pot and then we decide how to spend it. Okay? There's lots of different funding streams and a lot of that money is already designated towards things that it has to be spent on. So there's very little room in the budget to be moved around in a way that some might suggest. So when we're, we're talking about trying to build any efficiencies and find where we can cut costs, there are only, there are only a few places to choose from.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're gonna move on to the next question. It goes to Tina Riley first. What changes would you work for in terms of board operations and policies, administration roles and responsibilities, and inputs considered by the board for decision-making?
I would like to see a more transparent operation. I would like the board to take the lead. I would like the administration to follow that lead. The board actually gets their information from the community. There needs to be true community engagement and, and not so limited as it has been in whom they listen to and whom they don't listen to.
Thank you. Mark Burns.
I agree that there needs to be greater emphasis on engagement between the board and, and the community. I think that the board can learn a lot from the community. And the community, what I mean by that is not, not just people outside of the district, but teachers, students, parents. I think maybe we can learn a lesson in civility and can also learn a lesson in what is truly important to the students. And I think that message then, the board is, the, the role of the board is there to share that message with the administration. And I, I believe it's important for the board to, to look for unifying messages that can bring this community together and share that message with the administration.
Thank you. Liz Weisberg.
Could you repeat the whole question again?
What changes would you work for in terms of board operations and policies, administration roles and responsibilities, and inputs considered by the board for decision-making?
I think the board should have a more dominant role also. I think for a very long time, the, the board has had a very passive role and I've seen very few times where the board majority rejected anything the administration suggested. For some reason, questions are seen as bad and they're viewed as, if you ask me a question, I don't trust you when all people are asking for is, is more information. So I heard an expression recently or said, when you play cards, you act, you cut the cards every time. Just because I ask you to cut the cards doesn't mean I don't trust you. That's just how you play the game.
Thank you. Don Hovland.
I think the first thing is that the board doesn't, is, doesn't, isn't your boss. We work for you. And I think that every school should have a parent advisory committee with all, all the grades are put in that group so that you can, when it comes time to build a budget in a school, the parents have some input and we, they can, they can speak from experience because they're children who go to school. And we need to have more transparency with our parent population and parent advisory committees are a very important part of that and we should be listening to them.
Thank you. Matt Cooper.
Well, I don't see the relationship between the community, the board, the superintendent and administration as silos. I see the relationship as fluid and dynamic. That's how you get innovation. That's how you get synergies. That's how we grow together. There has to be listening on both sides, there has to be explanation on both sides. But the reality is we have to be able to make decisions too. Sometimes we don't all agree with decisions, but decisions have to be made at the end of the day. Otherwise, we can't move forward. So all the conversation, all the dialogue, and then we make the best decisions we can on the best data we can, but it may not be perfect.
Thank you. Shelley Pearson.
Thank you. An analogy I really appreciated was one of an hourglass where the community is one part and the administration is another part and the board is in the middle. And our job is to take what the community wants and cipher it through what administration is asking for. It's, so it's not about not trusting, as Liz said. We, as board members, are accountable to our community and the superintendent is accountable to us. So we need to make sure that we're doing the very best job that we can and that our community trusts us with the decisions that we make and that we trust our administration. There's a great book out there called The Essential School Board Book that talks about the, part of the job of the superintendent is to convince the board. So it doesn't mean that we don't trust when we ask questions, but we do need to be convinced when there's something brought to us, especially big decisions. We need to be certain that we can stand behind what's brought to us and that's just part of the job of the superintendent to do.
Thank you. John Fila.
So I don't think it's a school board's job to micromanage schools and administrators. I think that's why you hire the superintendent and, and then get those, that information back from the administrators. What I do think a board can do is set forth policies that encourage innovative practices. One of those policies that we don't have that I would like to see included is a policy on accessibility. There aren't any school districts in the state, as far as I'm aware, that have a, a policy on accessibility. But that's an important feature for so many of our students, to make sure that they can get the materials that they need and the way that they need to access them, access them. And when students, when we design for accessibility, we're actually designing for all learners. All students do better when we make things accessible for everyone. We also have policies, for, for instance, the religion in schools policy hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety-nine. So we have an almost twenty-year outdated policy that's not including all of our students and we need to make those kinds of things fair and welcoming to our learners.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments?
I just have a quick comment.
Yes, Liz.
And one of the ways that is, is frustrating as a teacher in the schools, a lot of times administration says that they've gotten teacher input, but several meetings where I was a teacher, we, there was a large sticky note and we were told not to talk. We weren't allowed to talk in the meeting, but to write our suggestions on smaller sticky notes, put them on the larger sticky note and that would be taken back. And that was looked at as engagement and I don't consider that engagement and I would like that to change.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're gonna move on to the next question then. It goes to Mark Burns first. No one has mentioned poor student achievement on state and national tests. What should the board do to improve the competence of our students?
I think one area to improve the competence of all of our students is by emphasizing an equity in opportunity. And that begins on the first day that students come into the schools as a pre-K or kindergarten student and all the way up through their graduation. Students need to have an equal opportunity to achieve their, their highest potential. That's how you raise competency across the board. It has to be resources in the classroom to, to provide that opportunity for kids across the learning spectrum. And that, that's why I feel that it's so important that we focus our, our resources there in, in the classroom. Once you have, if you identify needs early on, those needs can be addressed and those kids can reach their highest potential. That's how you raise competency across the board.
Thank you. Shelley Pearson.
Thank you. It's a question actually I wish the board would talk about more and that we would be able to see more comprehensive look of our data. And there are ways to do that where we can see here are the glaring areas we really need to focus on. I think we need to make sure we're not asking too much of our teachers, that we're allowing them to do what is most important with our students in teaching standards, but at the same time, that's not only who we are, right? We don't only want high test scores, we want students who can perform in life. So really, that So really, that balance between how do we want them to perform and then how do we want them to graduate? That's the Portrait of a Graduate that we did with our strategic plan. So it's really something that the board needs to look at because it's also been said that when the board is healthy and doing good things, the students achieve better. So that's just another reason for us to make sure that we are doing the best that we can at our level in building a high-quality board.
Thank you. John Fila.
So I think the, the way we increase test scores is not by doing more practice tests and doing more teaching to the test. And in fact, is that really the most important thing we need to be doing with our learners? Minnesota ranks towards the bottom in terms of the achievement gap with students, and I think if you address some of those issues, the research shows that all students do better, even those, those high-performing students. So what I would like to see is more students see themselves reflected in the curriculum, more students feeling like they have a voice in the classroom and can share their own experience. And I would like to see a, a culture that fosters innovation. The, the places that do really well on test scores aren't cranking out a lot of innovators. They're not making the next Steve Jobs. We want students who are creative, problem solvers. Those test scores will come when students are engaged in the content of their classes.
Thank you. Tina Riley.
I think I touched on this a little bit on one of my, my responses, but I think teachers need to have autonomy in their classrooms, and they need to have support. And the smaller class size actually enables teachers to identify students' needs and get them interventions or help for those needs. And also, when you do those things, you have an, you increase your socioeconomic status on academic success, and you increase your academic achievement. Kids have a motivation to learn, and so if we really start focusing a little bit on our classroom itself and the climate in the room, I think we can help those test scores.
Thank you. Matt Cooper.
I think it's a complex problem because there are multiple factors that go into it, but we need to support our teachers in evaluating each child. Is it the child? Is it something psychological? Is it something organic? Do they have a missed dyslexia? Is it something at home? Are there different ways of delivering the content to the kids? We can learn from other disciplines. In healthcare, very often now, there are navigators that help each individual patient get successfully through healthcare. Those sorts of concepts from other disciplines may have very, very fruitful application in things like this, to help the individual succeed.
Thank you. Don Hovland.
I think that, it was my privilege when I was in Montana. I got to know, they had a huge Air Force base there, and I got to know William Casey, who was the head of the CIA. And he was speaking at our student government day one time, and one of the students said, how do you decide who to hire? And he said, I asked them one question. What's your greatest strength? And you think about it. If you can't answer it right away, think about it. And so then another student said, well, what does that matter? Because he said, if they're being truthful, your greatest strength overextended is your greatest weakness. And he was right on that. Because I think if, if you go and look at the technology right now, it's, it's something that schools need to add to, they need to have it, but they need to make sure it doesn't rob the students of being human to each other. You go to a restaurant and a family is sitting there, and they're all on their computers or their cell phones.
Thank you.
We need to control that kind of stuff. That needs to be part of our future.
Thank you. Liz Weisberg.
To adjust student achievement, we need to reduce class sizes when we can. Every survey that the district has ever sent out that says, what is your, what is your top priority? Class size comes back every single time. I know it would be expensive, but the district is able to find money for projects that they're committed to. When I was on the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, we'd never mentioned a bus terminal, but a bus terminal got added, and that's a $7 million expense. And even though that was twice what we said we were going to pay for it, that money was found. So if it's a priority, we can figure out a way to pay for it. Additionally, when we first moved here, there were elementary schools that had different programmings. Stonebridge was a school that was an open environment. The whole kindergarten had a para system where there was a lot more individual attention paid because they had more paras for the, for the classroom, and we need to recognize different learning styles, and that would help achievement also.
Unfortunately, that is our last question. I probably have at least 20 more here that I wish I could ask, but we have to move to closing statements, and we'll begin with John Fila.
Thank you. So if you want to get ahold of me, you can go to my website, johnfiladotcom, J O N dot, J O N F I L A dot com, and I'll answer you. So I mentioned I hated school earlier about, let's see, when I was 17, I moved down to Coral Springs, Florida to live with my dad. He found us a place on the border of a district that he wanted to send me to, and it was the first time I ever felt like I was engaged in the classroom. I had two English teachers who kind of took an interest in me and, and helped encourage me. That school has been in the media a lot lately. It was Marjorie Stoneman Douglas in Parkland, Florida. And seeing the images come across the screen of what was happening in that school and the hallways where I used to walk, as a teacher, I've taken weapons away from students who were holding them up to other students. I've stopped plenty of fights. Our student safety is of utmost importance to me. There are students that were in our buildings today that had problems that need to be addressed. I'm sorry, I can't say more.
Thank you. With your closing statement, Liz Weisberg.
Thank you very much for coming today. I really appreciate it. I'm running for school board as a parent. We moved across the country to be a part of this district, and when we first got here, there were, like I said, just my last question, there were many different types of elementary schools, and we, that was one of the reasons that, that brought us here. Tech, we're from Texas, and Texas, if you live in a district, you cannot choose to go to another school unless your school is a failure of a school. So we were thrilled that we could, we live in Grant, so our neighborhood school was withdraw, but we were thrilled that we could choose any school that we wanted our children to go to. My older two did, did great at Stonebridge, but it was not a good fit for my youngest, and we were really blessed to have the opportunity that we could find a spot for him because he was not going to be successful at that school. I never understood why we need to make everybody the same if we're going to have alternate enrollment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now with his closing statement, Matt Cooper.
I think we should end on a positive note. There are many terrific things and terrific programs in this district. I know, I have a 14-year-old at the high school, and what she has been exposed to has truly been great. Doesn't mean we don't have complex challenges, and anybody here that tells you that the solutions are simple isn't quite understanding the full, the full impact of it. I have a wealth of expertise from business to corporate strategy to healthcare, to communication, to team, teamwork and problem solving. It's going to take those sorts of broad experiences with applied innovation to solve the challenges, to make sure that our services and our programs and our excellence is truly available to each of our students. Thanks.
Thank you. Now with her, her closing statement, Shelley Pearson.
Thank you. Just a quick addition to the last question about student achievement. I think parent and community support would be huge for making a difference in that, for parents to know what their students are doing and be able to come alongside their teachers. And then in closing, I care deeply about this district, our students, our staff, our community members, and I believe this district can do really amazing things. It is in many ways. I agree with that. My kids are having a good experience. I think we can do better, and though the last four years have been difficult, I want to continue to serve tirelessly, to make sure our students have the best education they possibly can and the best start to their adult lives that we've prepared them for. I think we can do that, and I think we can do great things when we really work together with our community, who has a lot to offer, and our great staff, and that we can work together to do great things.
Thank you. Closing statement from Tina Riley.
I've spent time in the community as a coach, a volunteer at church and school, and vice president of the Chevilles Booster Club. I led the implementation of the junior Chevilles, creating a feeder into the high school. I've attended all board community engagement trainings, Portrait of a Graduate, the World's Best Workforce Trainings. I have spoken with past and present admin with the Department of Ed regarding avid equity, integration, and at-risk kids, and continue to meet with members of the community. I'm still waiting on requested data surrounding programming, and I'm itemizing the 2015 bond. As a wife, mom, grandparent, volunteer, and small business owner, I look forward to working with you to ensure strong community-driven schools. As an elected school board member, I stand by my reputation as an honest, dedicated, independent, and creative thinker. It's time to get to work and make great things happen for Stillwater Area Public Schools.
Thank you. Closing statement from Mark Burns.
Thank you all for coming tonight. This election presents an important opportunity for the community to shape the future of this district. The school board members elected this November will be instrumental in, number one, determining how to best accommodate demographic changes across the district, and two, developing a sustainable budget. Those two items can be intertwined, but only if the board can work as one. The board can work together with the administration, with the community, with parents, students, to define a goals that, that unite all of our, all of our students and all of our community. My interest in the school board and running for the school board is not based upon a single issue or agenda, but rather to act in a thoughtful manner, to take advantage of the opportunities that this district does have in front of us. This district is excellent. I, I believe very strongly in this district, and I've, I asked for your vote in November.
Thank you. Closing statement now from Don Hovland.
My background is a little different because I went to a one-room country school for six years. At, I was the only one in my class. And I was the top-ranking student in that class. But, but the other thing that was interesting, I couldn't speak English. I could only speak Norwegian, and the teacher couldn't speak Norwegian. And so I, I understand how important it is for teachers to meet the students where they are and work from that point. There wasn't a ESL program, so that I think we need to make sure that we listen, that Oakland Junior High School now has about 25% of its student body, students of color or Muslim. And I saw teachers meeting those students where their needs were, and that, that is extremely important, that we, that we build a school that, that will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. The League thanks the candidates for their participation, the Valley Access Channels for broadcasting this event, the City of Oak Park Heights for the use of their facilities, our League volunteers, and you, the audience, for your attendance and interest. I would also like to remind everybody that tomorrow is National Voter Registration Day, and the League of Women Voters will be out in force at four high schools and Century College, and those high schools include Stillwater High School. Let your voice be heard. Vote November 6th. Thank you.